The April 11th, 2023 meeting of the St. Joseph County Council is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation, which will be given by Councilman Shetzel.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray, please. Father God, we thank you for this day in our country in which we can come to this meeting and we can share our concerns and our thoughts about how we should be governed. We thank you that we live in a land where we have that opportunity regardless of where we fall on the political spectrum. We thank you for all that you've blessed our land with. We thank you most for the great sacrifice you made that we celebrated this last weekend. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Next up is Petition, Communications, and Miscellaneous Matters. Mr. Fig.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Mishwaka Economic Development Janet Whitfield Heidick.
Ziggy Systems Incorporated.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to nominate Janet Whitfield Heidick to the Mishwaka Economic Development. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Is that shown yet?
Ayes. Janet Whitfield Heidick is nominated to the Mishwaka Economic Development Council. Next up is report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Oh, let me go back and get one more. I need a motion on the minute, sorry.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes for the March meeting are approved. Any report from county commissioners?
No.
Thank you. Any report from any council special committee? Hearing none. We'll move on to first readings. Clerk, will you please read the first bill?
Bill number 53-23, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of the St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1-1 at sequence. Petitioner Prairie View High BTU LLC.
Bill number 53-23 is assigned to the Land Use Committee. Next bill, please.
Bill number 54-23, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number of the St. Joseph County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area. Petitioner AM General.
Bill number 54-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Please read the next bill.
Bill number 55-23, an ordinance to terminate written commitments concerning the rezoning of property generally located at 5450526th Street. Petitioner MFD 2 LLC.
Bill number 55-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Clerk, please read the next bill.
Bill number 56-23, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at approximately 28.5 acres at the northeast corner of State Road 933 and Douglas Road from U University District to PUD Plan Unit Development. Petitioner University of Notre Dame Dulock.
Bill number 56-23 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings. Next up are resolutions. Clerk, will you read the first resolution, please?
Bill number 58-23, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council honoring James Jim Corporal for his many years of service to the citizens of St. Joseph County.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. Root, hereby approach the podium.
That's fine.
Honorable President Root, members of the county council, and the public that have gathered today, we have drafted a resolution to honor a county employee, a longtime county employee, who has left our employment recently. And the resolution kind of goes like this. Whereas the St. Joseph County Council represents all citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, and periodically recognizes persons who by their dedication and hard work have distinguished themselves in our community. And whereas James Jim Corporal is a St. Joseph County native and graduated from LaSalle High School where he played football, he obtained his bachelor's degree from Purdue University and his law degree from Cumberland Law School at Sanford University in Birmingham, Alabama. He married his high school sweetheart, the former Lynn Johnson, in 1974, with whom they have three children, Lindsay, Haley, and Andrew. And whereas James Corporal has served the citizens of St. Joseph County by providing leadership professional criminal defense services by serving as the chief public defender since 1998, as a deputy prosecutor, a public defender, and a private practice criminal defense attorney since 1978, and was the longtime Democratic appointee to the St. Joseph County Election Board from 1995 through 2020. And whereas Jim Corporal has dedicated himself to improving the lives of the residents of St. Joseph County by providing competent and professional legal criminal defense services to his clients and the indigent clients who deserved a public defender. And whereas during his tenure as chief public defender, Jim Corporal has made many contributions to St. Joseph County government on many issues, including but not limited to the innovative creation of the Public Defender Board Department as we know it today, whereby reimbursement dollars of public defense services has topped $15 million since 2007. He's provided adequate case number management to ensure that the public defender clients receive proper legal representation and ensured that the public defender staff was at the top of their game through ongoing training. And whereas Jim Corporal has always been known for his practicality and common sense on matters and could be counted on for providing sound legal advice and guidance free of political or partisan agenda. And whereas Jim Corporal has been a partner with his longtime friend and confidant Mitch Heppenheimer, has represented thousands of clients, including three clients in capital murder cases, and is widely known as being an excellent trial attorney. And whereas Jim Corporal has made a huge impact on the judicial system in St. Joseph County and therefore indirectly St. Joe County itself, his legal knowledge, his skills, his dedication will be hard to match, and we will feel the loss upon his departure from the position of chief public defender. Now therefore, be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that, section one, on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, and the St. Joseph County Council, we proudly and publicly recognize Jim Corporal for his lasting impact on St. Joseph County and by extension, the residents of St. Joseph County. And we extend our appreciation and thanks to him for his many years of service to citizens of St. Joseph County. We will be forever indebted for his dedication and service. Section two, the St. Joseph County Council wishes James Jim Corporal and his wife Lynn and their family many years of health and happiness moving forward. I would ask the council if they would consider adopting this resolution this evening, and in doing so, I think we could honor appropriately Jim Corporal for his many years as a county public defender and the chief public defender. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. May we have a motion on bill number 58-23?
For passage.
Second.
We have a motion to pass made by Councilman Morton, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on resolution 58-23? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Resolution 58-23 is approved by unanimous vote. Thank you.
So Jim, this is the way we distinguish people in our county for service above me on, and by doing so, we give you this resolution. I think county commissioners here want to also say something about you or present you with something, but.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Don't go anywhere. Mr. Root, may I?
Yes.
We tried to do this last week, but we got busy on a lot of stuff. But on behalf of the St. Joe County Commissioners, we'd like to present you, drum roll, key to the county.
Yeah.
And Mr. Murphy, this does open up all the treasure safes in.
I think so, yes.
Cool. So I've known Mr. Corporal since 1975. We were in court together, in court against each other, but the work that he has led and being a public defender is a very, very difficult job. But he has led his staff and they've done a phenomenal job. So everybody in St. Joe County on both sides of the aisle, when it comes to public defenders, this man has led a very good group of people and he deserves all the credit for doing this for such a long time, so. Mr. Dixon, would you like to speak on behalf of Mr. Corporal? Okay. Cool, buddy.
Mr. Corporal, would you like to say anything?
Okay. I want to thank all of you for this resolution and the key, obviously. There are so many people to thank when you've done something for such a long period of time. I would like to thank my wife and family for being there because I don't think it's really easy to be married to lawyers, especially, especially trial lawyers who try big cases and people talk about you. So I want to thank them first and foremost. Secondly, I guess I have to thank Judge Crone for appointing me in 1998. He took a shot and gave me this job and I've had it for 25 years. I also have to thank Judge Gotch, who allowed us in 2005 to begin the process of putting together the Public Defender Department. As Mark stated in the resolution, we went from rags to riches in terms of being a department. And with the reimbursements we get from the state of Indiana, the excess of 15 million that the Public Defender Department has brought back to the county is really extraordinary, I think. I would like to thank members of the commissioners and the council, past and present. Some of you were here at the beginning, a lot of you weren't, but we've gone through a lot of things together. And lastly, I got to thank the group that I had who worked for me for the last 25 years. I used to tell people in Indianapolis that I would put our public defender staff up against anybody in this state as competent trial lawyers, and I still believe that today. We have, I have three judges and two magistrates who used to work for me as public defenders. The group that I have now is younger and wiser and getting better and better by the day. I want to thank my successor, Jeff Kimmel, who's here in the audience. I believe when I selected Jeff to be my chief deputy last year, that he would become a very good chief public defender, and I see that in his future. So keeping it short, I just want to let you know how much I appreciate this, and it really means a lot to me. Thank you very much.
Next up is resolution 52-23. Clerk, will you please read the resolution?
Bill number 52-23, resolution of the St. Joseph County Council urging the state of Indiana to increase RCAP reimbursement rate. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Council.
Petitioner?
Mr. Root, could I approach the podium?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Root, we learned through the process of managing the issue of Portage Manor that it would be helpful for our state legislators to know what our needs are up in our county in terms of how to sustain Portage Manor in a way for the residents to keep on living there. So we learned through them that they would like to know from elected bodies in our community if we support additional funding for the residents that are there. And we found out through this process that there's a fund called RCAP Residential Care Assistance Program that hasn't been changed. The rate of pay on that hasn't been changed in over 15 years. It's currently at $54.12 a day per resident at Portage Manor, which most of our residents at Portage Manor are receiving RCAP. In fact, I think we're the highest concentration of RCAP recipients in the state. One quarter of them live in St. Joe County. So that having not been changed in 15 years, it became apparent that could be part of the reason why we're having financial troubles at Portage Manor. So whether we're in the business or not, or whoever takes over Portage Manor in the future, it would be good for the state legislature to know that we need additional RCAP funding. I would like to offer an amendment to resolution R5-23 under the first whereas, if we could amend that line to add the word mentally ill after the word sick to match the state statute so they parallel each other. And also in the second paragraph where it says at the very end, tax dollars to care for the same population, if we could strike the word same and insert the word other and make the word population plural, that would let the state know that this group of people that live there really don't have any other alternative for funding to support them. And I'll read the resolution if you'd like. Whereas Portage Manor was built in 1906 to care for the poor, self-limited, sick, I'll add the amendment mentally ill and infirm. Whereas since 1906, numerous public welfare programs, including Medicaid and HUD low-income and VA housing programs have been created that are funded by tax dollars to care for the other populations. Whereas Portage Manor is currently funded by the Indiana Residential Care Assistance Program. Whereas the Indiana Residential Care Assistance Program reimbursement rate has not been increased in approximately 15 years. Whereas the reimbursement rate paid by the Indiana Residential Care Assistance Program is insufficient to pay for the proper care and treatment of the individuals served by Portage Manor, and the program has lost approximately $800,000 per year in recent years. Whereas the St. Joseph County Council recognizes that the Indiana Residential Care Assistance Program cares for a vulnerable subset of the population that is otherwise ineligible to receive benefits from Medicaid, Medicare, and other funding sources, yet these individuals need financial assistance to obtain suitable housing. And whereas St. Joseph County, and whereas the St. Joseph County Council finds that it would be prudent to increase the Residential Care Assistance Program reimbursement rate to facilitate care for these vulnerable individuals, now therefore be it resolved as follows. Based on the circumstances outlined above, the St. Joseph County Council urges the state of Indiana to increase the Residential Care Assistance Program reimbursement rate and/or to provide or increase other funding sources. Section two, this resolution is effective upon adoption by the council, and section three, a copy of this resolution shall be provided to the county auditor. This is a very similar resolution that was passed approximately two weeks ago by the county commissioners, and they sent that along to the state legislators. I know that President Root had sent a letter indicating, because he thought there was enough support in the council, sent a letter to the state legislators. There weren't that stating that we would support something like this, he believed, at this meeting tonight, and we're already getting positive responses back from the state legislature that they appreciate knowing where we stand on this. So I would ask and urge everybody to consider passing this tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none. May I have a motion on Mr. Katandry's amendment?
Second.
What? And who was second?
Second.
Motion to amend resolution 52-23 was made by Mr. Morton. It was seconded by Mr. Thomas. Any further comments on the amendment? Hearing none. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The amendment is passed and now becomes part of the hearing. May I have a motion on bill number 52-23?
Motion to approve is amended.
Mr. Morton, Tanner. Motion to pass was made by Mr. Tanner, was seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further council discussion on bill number 52-23? Hearing none. All in favor of bill number 52-23, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Resolution 52-23 is approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
That concludes resolutions. Next up are salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read the first bill?
Bill 28-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner, commissioners.
Committee report, please.
I'm sorry. Favorable recommendations?
No.
Without.
There was no recommendation.
Oh, on this one, no recommendation? Which one was this? Yes, I know. No recommendation. Okay. This came with no recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Sure. Thank you. Derek Dieter, St. Joe County Commissioner, still in District Two. This is a follow-up to President Baxmeyer's, I think he's done one, possibly two presentations to explain this, which I don't think it was explained in detail enough, so we've added some stuff. We sent out a email on Monday, just with an updated job description. I think a couple of the meetings you guys had asked for that, and then also just some other information that I'll hit here, and you can have, if you have questions on that. Number one, we are restructuring the HR department. One person who was in charge of the benefits is leaving, so we have an opportunity to restructure that. That's one of the many things that I thought when I was elected that needed to be tweaked in county government. HR is a big one, and we have the opportunity to do that. Secondly, as part of that restructure, and I'll let Mr. Dalton talk about that, this position needs to reflect the importance of the risk involved in over $22 million annually in health care risk liability, insurance benefits, and settlements that flows through this county annually. And if Mr. Dalton, you'd like to explain that to everyone.
I think we've mentioned a couple times, Steve Dalton, financial advisor to the county. I think we've mentioned a couple times that we don't just have health insurance. We obviously have a substantial health insurance commitment to our employees. We also have regular liability risk, settlements, workers' comp, the type of things that happen when you're a $250 million business happen in this $250 million annual business, and they amount to $22.5 million a year that flows through the books that you approve the budgets of on an annual basis. And it's been my recommendation that somebody take ownership of that on the seventh floor and know what's going on within that $22 million a year.
One of the other things, because I think when Carl was explaining this, I think he was more talking about a finance director as opposed to a combination. HR and HR is a big part of the component of this. And also in the last paragraph, the proposed salary of $120,000 is appropriate. In a market competitive to pay this position, we all know that county will never, ever be able to attract what's in the private sector, and that's why we have good employees here, and we try to do as much as possible to compensate them, which is a hard dilemma for everybody in here, especially you guys when you're trying to figure out through budgets. But with this, we intend to utilize the salary of the employee that is exiting, which is approximately $46,000, and the healthcare savings of the merger of the voter registration within the clerk is approximately $75,000 to pay for this position, which means this is a budget-neutral position for '23 and '24. It's not an increase of an overall number of employees, it's a reorganization. So if y'all have any further questions on this.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Katandry.
Maybe for the petitioner or maybe Mr. Dalton, the question is, is this, you know, when you give them the legacy cost of benefits that go with a full-time equivalent, you, and we're supplanting, we're not adding additional full-time equivalents, but when you keep a full-time equivalent, could you find someone to do this for a contracted rate at this level of finance, this level of cost versus hiring somebody?
Sure. I think it's possible that you could contract out pieces of this job description. It might be more than one person if you contracted it out. You might start carving off HR from liability and risk. The benefit of having a full-time equivalent is that they can work 40 hours a week just on your seventh-floor county projects, and outside contractors not going to be able to work just for you. So they're probably going to be more specialized.
So on the risk piece, is that what we pay Gallagher, formerly R and R, is that what we pay them to do, is to assess our risk and advise what risk controls?
Yes.
And we need to have?
Yes, they are one of your vendors that advise you on a portion of your risk. You also have a workers' comp vendor that advises you on your workers' comp piece. And then the auditor's office obviously tracks everything that comes through the books so that you have your reports on a monthly basis.
Steve, I'm sorry, Mark, I don't mean to interrupt, but please continue, but that right there, unless I misunderstood what you just said, that just sounds to me like duplication, at least to a point.
So let me give you an example anecdotally. A year ago, it was proposed that the county needed better cyber insurance coverage. A series of employees with no rank or authority in this building kicked that around for about six months and eventually decided there wasn't budget for cyber insurance coverage. Because nobody was really in charge of that, Gallagher recommended it highly, but those employees didn't have the authority to buy 50 or 75 or $100,000 in coverage on their own, and they needed somebody else to take ownership of that decision and push it through so that you had an additional appropriation in front of you to be able to buy that health insurance, or to buy that cyber insurance policy. So I'm talking about somebody that quarterbacks all the input and advice from all those vendors.
So why couldn't that decision be, have been made by you or Mr. Murphy? I'm just asking.
It did eventually come to John and myself and County Attorney Mish, but not quick enough. I think it needs to be a much more day-to-day basis.
But that's exactly my point. You just said it eventually came to you three.
Yes.
The attorney, yourself, and our auditor.
Yes.
But not on a timely basis.
Yes.
But to me, that still screams duplication.
Well, yeah, and I guess if I could, I mean, if Gallagher made those suggestions, recommendations, why weren't those made to the commissioners or the executive body of?
I think we're all aware that bureaucracy has silos, so I think it got stuck in one of the silos, to be blunt.
Because I'm probably all saying, I see a lot of, I still see duplication here of what the auditor's office does, right? Particularly on page two. I mean, we just got this yesterday, I didn't even see it till today.
Sure.
So we had asked for it at least a week in advance, so we had time to digest it and think of it.
And that didn't happen?
And that didn't happen, and it changed dramatically from the first iteration we got on March 14th. So within a month, it became much more focused on human resources, much less on the financial component.
Which I think Commissioner Dieter spoke to because of the opportunity to reorganize that department.
Yeah, but, but, so what is the real goal here? I mean, it shifts, it keeps shifting, and we're asking for a lot of money. And again, we talked about, yes, it's hard to attract good people to our county often because of the salaries we pay, but we've got really great people sitting right here in the auditor's office who don't make anywhere near that kind of money in that position. And again, they do quite a bit of this, some of this work that's in here now, so I just still have a problem with the salary. I'm kind of not having a chance to really learn more about what, why it changed so much.
I think, I think I don't want to put words in anybody else's mouth, but I walked out of committee two weeks ago with the impression that we had general agreement that there was a need for a position. I think Mr. Murphy said something similar, but that we were discussing whether or not the salary was correct.
Correct. That is correct.
But we also asked for a lot more detail because we were looking at this.
And not a day before the meeting.
This position, which was, you know, looked like this, and now we're looking at this position, which is two and a half pages.
Correct.
I mean, because we did want to, there weren't any qualifications on the other one. It was very, very sparse. So I appreciate the much more detailed analysis, but.
You would have preferred to have it a week ago.
Yeah, a week ago would have been.
Correct, yes. Exactly.
And the grants part, which seemed to be such important part, piece, when we talked about it before, is totally gone. So I guess I have, still have questions.
So on that, you don't mind me asking, Mr. Root?
Mr. Katandry.
On the grants piece, is the grants piece gone then altogether? The person will not be involved in grant administration or grant writing, or?
I think the general philosophy is that many of the departments have somebody who file, who applies for grants. The auditor's office has noted in the past that we could use better compliance and reporting from those departments, especially the highway department, which come, which brings a load of federal money through for highway projects. So this may not be as much an application process, those people exist, as a compliance and reporting process. American Rescue Plan is another good example.
Any further comments or questions from the council? Mr. Root? Mr. Shetzel?
Thank you. So one of the things that I hear you saying is that, one of the big problems we have is that decisions are getting stuck in places where they don't belong, that we need to have an individual in this finance HR position that kind of streamlines how that works from the commissioner's seat down, right? And that currently, that's, we don't have that person.
And that currently, that's, we don't have that person. And that's what I'm, I'm hearing you say.
I'm shaking my head affirmative, yes.
Thank you.
But I, but I, I think that that's what you referred to a few minutes ago. At the last committee meeting, there was really no argument about the need for the position to solve those types of issues. It's just the salary that's associated with it.
That was my takeaway from the committee.
Okay, so that's all I'm saying, you know. There's no, there's no argument there. But when our auditor makes, I don't want to, I don't want to say what you make, but significantly lower than what we're asking for in this new position. And there again, I feel very strongly about the amount of duplication and getting the new description at the last minute, which we were promised would not happen. And I guess I have another question, just a question. Our, one of our former esteemed colleagues, pretty much every time something like this came up, his first question was, why not do this at budget time, which is right around the corner? So to me, that makes more sense because then we can maybe look at this position and ask it compares to our auditor, deputy auditor, and people in other departments that do similar work as far as our finances. So why wouldn't we do it then? I mean, we've done without this position for all these years. Why not do it at budget?
I think that's an adequate pushback, councilman. And I think typically this council has said, don't bring us new employees in the middle of the year.
Correct.
That cost new money. And so the attempt here, because of an opportunity to reorganize, was to be budget neutral. We have allowed many times departments to make presentations that were budget neutral for reorganization purposes.
And I understand that, I understand that. But I think this is unique from the perspective, the major discrepancy in this salary and people, longtime employees that have done not adequate jobs, but outstanding jobs. And I'm looking at one of them right there.
President Root?
Can I make one comment? Not, not about salary or anything, but, I mean, I gotta say though, as far as criticism of HR and the auditor's office for managing the insurance programs, we just finished the year with our largest surplus in health insurance program ever, probably ever. We had about, everybody remembers, you know, 2016, we had a $5 million deficit. We end the year with about a $3.5 million surplus in our health insurance.
Amazing.
And so something has gone right this past year. And it's not just the auditor's office doing all the work either. It's, the seventh floor has also done a lot of work on that. And the same with the liability insurance. We don't have the funding, you know, we don't have the big ability to just pour in a lot of money there. But we've kept that afloat. We've kept reserves in that fund. We haven't gone negative any, at the end of any year in the liability insurance fund. And it's not just our office, it's, it's HR as well, so, and Gallagher as well. So I think it's a cooperative effort so far.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments, Mr. Murphy. Thank you very much.
Mr. Shetzel?
Thank you. And I think, Mr. Murphy, you and I have talked where you've said, mentioned that that new position will make those cooperative efforts even more effective. I think we...
I do think the seventh floor needs a finance director, I do.
Okay, thank you. And as far as, you know, hiring employees outside of budget season, in general, I would be in agreement that that's a fine rule to stay within budget season. But I, I believe that we, we, and I would also recognize that at budget season, I would be very interested in looking at the salaries of some of the people that you've mentioned, specifically Mr. Murphy, and trying to make that more right by what they're worth. Because I think there is value there compared to, the value they give us is much more than what we are paying them. At the same time, I would also argue that a position such as this will have value way beyond the salary I believe the commissioners are asking for. And I think since it's a budget-neutral position and it's going to bring those decisions outside of those silos and bring more continuity from the top down on all those decisions that they've talked about, we're really, we're talking about, I think, a windfall in, in value here. And so I, I think maybe we need to start looking at high-level finance, HR, those types of positions a little more differently than we have in the past as we try to streamline services and make them more, more customer satisfaction. That's one of the things that we would like to accomplish.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, make one more point. And that is the fact that we were looking at a position that was going to help the commissioners, report to the commissioners. And it was presented tonight as a total restructuring of the HR department, basically. So that is significant. And again, seems to me would require a deeper discussion than just adding this person. We're at, we're restructuring a department. So that's affecting other people in that department and other people in the county. So I think that's a very significant move to make at the last minute. I mean, we find out tonight, really, that that's the plan as we were restructuring a department. So I, I have some issues with that.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Root, I would like to make a motion to amend bill number 2823, letter Q, for the job to be...
Wait, just a minute, Mr. Thomas. We're not up to letter Q yet, right?
This is, this is...
It correlates to letter Q. Coincides with this, with this bill.
Would it remain to have an amendment on Q?
Right, so we should amend both. But amend bill 2823 now and then when we get to the... Letter Q. Letter Q, amend that, assuming the amendment passes. So the 4423Q is the fiscal matter, which is the dollar amounts, which correlate into this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Thomas?
So I, yes, I would like to make a motion to amend 28-3, bill number 28-23, correct?
Correct.
For $100,000 a year. Do you have a second on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend this bill and change the salary to $100,000 a year. I don't know if it'd be fair to ask Mr. Murphy if he can prorate that for us so we know the amount.
Let's see if we have our iPhones ready to go on that.
Yeah.
We could probably get a good estimate, yeah.
So it might, might just be $100,000 annualized to be adjusted for proportion.
We can do that for you.
That's, that's what you're suggesting, right, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, yeah, prorate it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend this bill and reduce it to $100,000 per annual year. Is there any comment or discussion on the amendment? Mr. Katanzarite?
I appreciate Mr. Thomas's offering of an amendment. Seems more in line with what I think would probably be more fair. I guess another question would be to either Commissioner Dieter or to Mr. Dalton. For me, two things. One, would we see a corresponding decrease in the cost to Gallagher and/or other outside consultants if this person comes on board and takes away some of those responsibilities? One. And two, I know Mr. Shetzel made reference to customer service, which is important. We also have a customer service component to our county employees. And by reducing the staff in HR, like, and the person that's leading it that does such a phenomenal job, as well as the current HR director, will the employees see a decrease in their customer service in terms of being able to call in and speak to a live person here in the county city building about HR issues as they arise?
Counsel, let me speak only to the first item and I'll have Mr. Dieter speak to the second. There will not be a reduction in cost from the outside vendors. For example, Gallagher only receives premiums on the insurance that they place for us. So they would not be reducing their premiums that they would receive. They don't, they don't charge us a consulting fee. So there would be no corresponding drop in cost.
How about Dalton sender? Would there be a decrease in costs?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to get less phone calls. Yeah, sure. Can you speak to the customer service? What's your question, Mark?
About HR, our employees have grown accustomed to having, to be able to call in and talk to somebody, their HR benefits consultant. And we have, when you have an HR matter, insurance matter, you can call in and get ahold of that person. That's the person who's leaving right now. So what will happen to that position? If we're eliminating that position, how will our county employees be able to get customer service when they have an HR matter or insurance issue with the restructuring?
The current HR will have the opportunity to take over the benefits. So are you talking once, if whatever y'all pass, once we put that out? Out to bid and whoever puts in for it, and then we select a person and you have to ask him about that person?
Yeah, I'm asking, will the county employees see a difference in the level of service they've grown accustomed to over the last?
I think with what we're projecting from out of the commissioner's office, yes. I would assume so. Because unfortunately for the current HR director, she had all the HR to do. She was doing, she had vehicles in her office. She had titles in her office. She had to do the, while we're trying to reorganize the fleet manager, she had to make sure when cars were crashed, she had the damage. So she had way too much on her plate. So I think to answer your question, yeah, I think we'll do a better job.
Like an improvement in customer service?
100%, yeah.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Mr. Shetzel?
Yes, sir. I would just like to say that I, I believe, and I know my experience is not great, but I do have executive experience. But I believe that at the higher salary, we would get a better employee. I just wanted to say that before the vote, understanding that this amendment has been offered.
Thank you. Any other further comments or questions on the amendment? Hearing non-clerk, would you please take the role on the amendment?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
No.
Mr. Morton?
No.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess? Mr. Katanzarite?
Just to clarify, this is for the amendment only, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
I have it passing 6-3, the amendment.
With the record show that the amendment passed by a vote of 6-3, it will now be part of the hearing. We will now open it to the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak against this bill? Please come to the podium, give us your name and address. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Mike McNamara, 51940 Lilac Road. Having started becoming more and more aware of the governance of our county in the last year, I have an observation. Whatever the merits of this bill, I'm disturbed that sitting here in the audience as one of the taxpayers who's going to fund this, that everything seems to be done on the fly now. I mean, to hear that our council gets such an incredibly important piece of legislation the night before they want to vote, and then the only amendment is to the amount of money when we're restructuring a whole part of the government, it just doesn't seem to make sense. So I would ask that, at the very least, you table this and give yourselves an opportunity to think about what you're doing with our money. Thank you.
Good evening. Cheryl Nix, 17901 Saber Ridge Drive, Clay Township. I too am concerned about when the council received this information, needing to make a decision on a bill that's talking about restructuring, hiring, outside of the budget time, and looking at possibly a $100,000 salary position. I think it only makes sense that we, that it be tabled, let the committee look at it again. Because if I understand it, it came out of committee with not, with a neutral, kind of no recommendation. So that would be my suggestion. As a taxpayer, that would feel much more responsible to me. Thank you.
Roy Sines, 426 South Mead. I agree with the previous speakers that this seems a little rushed. There's obviously some confusion as to what this role and the scope of this role is going to be. So to, much to Mr. Shetzel's point of, you know, where's this, why are we paying this amount versus the 128? Having managed a $300 million budget in a Fortune 100 company, depending on the scope of this work, it may be in line with what's out there. But seeing as it's not clearly defined, I think it's very difficult for this council to be able to accurately say that $100,000, $128,000, or maybe even $50,000 is the appropriate budget. Obviously, Mr. Murphy feels that there's a need for this role, but I think you guys deserve your time in vetting this out so that you're doing the best job for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, the public hearing on this bill is now closed. May I have a motion on bill number 28-23?
Mr. President, may I make a comment?
Ms. Drake?
Motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Drake to pass and a second by Mr. Thomas. Any further council discussion on bill number 28-23?
Mr. President?
Mr. Tanner?
Apologize for jumping on there briefly. I think it is worth noting for the record that while this job position has majority support from the commissioners, it does not have universal support from our three commissioners. It was requested around noon today that, from one of our commissioners, that we delay the vote for such a critical decision. And I think it's worth the public record, understanding that this does not have uniform support from the commissioners before we vote on it.
Any further comment or discussion from the council? Mr. Morton?
Just for the record, I just would like to reiterate that a position that is this important, and I totally agree that it is, it is extremely important. But there again, for the record, for us to receive the change in the job description the day before we were supposed to vote, and we were promised we'd get at least a week to not only review it individually, but I've been pushing, Mr. Root, I called you yesterday about another matter, been pushing for more council discussion and not just individual thoughts. And that's, that's not a negative comment towards you at all. I'm just saying, you know, I've been pushing for that. And this hasn't happened with this. And there again, for the record, I just feel like we've gone without this position all this time. And because of people like Mr. Murphy, we've done more than okay. So there again, why can't we just do this at budget time? And if we're talking about a true effort to make positions that are similar in this county, make their salaries similar, then that's the perfect time to do that. I just don't understand why we are, that we have to do this tonight. I really don't understand that. Thank you.
Any further comments from any member of the council? Mr. Dieter, go ahead.
Yes, and what Mr. Tanner alluded to was an email put out by Commissioner Fleming, who said she would like to delay this vote, the job description, so we could further discuss the issue reorganizational concept. We have done that several times with Commissioner Fleming. So, and that's why I always say that we have done that several times with Commissioner Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. Dieter. Any further comments? I would like to address the one comment made by a member of the public. I know I did my research to see if this new salary at $100,000 would be more competitive with what similar positions around the state are. And it looked like that this was in line with where a lot of counties that are our size are at for either a finance person or an HR director. And so having done the research on that, I think, I think we can agree that, that the salary is much closer in line to where many of our peer counties our size are at. Any other comments? Hearing non-clerk, will you please take the role on bill number 28-23?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
No.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
No.
Mr. Katanzarite?
No.
Mr. Tanner?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes 5-4.
Mr. Morton?
And also for the record, I do appreciate Mr. Thomas's amendment. Just for the record.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 28-23 was passed by a vote of five to four. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Actually, will you please read the next three bills?
Bill number 45-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner assessor.
Mr. Murphy, I think we have somebody here. Are you from the assessor's office?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I guess there's somebody here, so we'll just run it like.
We can do that, that's fine.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Amber King.
Committee report, please.
Bill comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening. My name is Amber King. I'm the office deputy of the county assessor on the third floor here in the building. Bill number 4523, we are asking to eliminate one of the part-time positions so we can take that salary and divide it into two and increase the salary of two of the part-time positions. This will help us, sorry, this will help us bring onboard more qualified staff. Bill 4623, we are asking to transfer the salary fund from the sales disclosure fund to the cumulative reassessment fund. And 4723, we are asking to increase.
Let's hold up on that one for right now. Let's do them one at a time.
Okay.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner on bill 45-23? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 45-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak against this bill? Is there anyone online who'd like to speak against this bill? Seeing none, public hearing on bill number 45-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Fig. Any further council discussion on 45-23? Hearing non clerk, will you please take the role?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
And President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 45-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number 46-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing the salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner assessor.
Committee report, please.
4623 comes with a favorable recommendation. Mr. President.
Thank you. Petitioner?
We are asking to move the funds from the sales disclosure over to the cumulative reassessment.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from the council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill 46-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of the bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing on 46-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move for approval was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing non clerk, will you please take the role?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Let the record show that bill number 46-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, please?
Bill number 47-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner assessor.
Committee report, please.
4723 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
We are asking to increase the salary on this position. The money would come from another part-time position that we were, or that we previously eliminated. We are going to turn the position from an office deputy, or sorry, from a reassessment deputy into a management position.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill 47-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on this bill is now closed. May I have a motion on 47-23?
Motion to approve.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton. It was seconded by Councilman Shetzel. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing non clerk, will you please take the role?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 47-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, please?
Bill 49-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 115-22, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2023. Petitioner probate court.
Ms. Drake, committee report, please.
Bill number 4923 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
These grant, this appropriation that we're requesting is for the capacity grant funds for the Casa Department. It has a salary amendment that follows the same schedule as that position in the county budget, and there is no match for this grant.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on bill 4923. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on 49-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Fig. It was seconded by Mr. Katanzerite?
Tanner.
Mr. Tanner, thank you. Mr. Tanner, any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing non clerk, will you please take the role?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 49-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
That concludes salary amendments. Next up will be a public hearing, public comments on fiscal matters. All fiscal matters were heard at our March committee meeting and discussed by the council. At that time, clerk, will you please read bill number 44-23?
Bill number 44-23, an ordinance appropriating transferred money for the purposes therein specified for the several departments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
Thank you. I'd actually like to offer an amendment on this before we get started, and that's, I would like to table items B and C. Is there a second on that? Thank you. Motion to table items B and C was made by Councilman Root. It was seconded by Councilman Drake. Is there any council discussion on the amendment? Should probably explain, there was a lot of discussion at council, and after thinking about it, and like with some of Mr. Morton's comments earlier, we decided to take a little more time and to look at this particular one in a little more detail. So, that said, any further comment? We will move to the vote, all in favor of the amendment, or, I'm sorry, the motion to table. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Bill number 4423, parts B and C are tabled.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
4423, item Q. I'd like to amend that. It's showing the salary based on a hundred and twenty thousand dollar per year prorated salary. I'd like to amend item Q to pay the financial director at what Mr. Thomas recommended, at $100,000 per year prorated. I'm hoping Mr. Murphy or Abby Doyle has done the math on that for us, what that.
Abby's already done the math on that, actually.
So I'd like to amend item Q to reflect whatever the math is on that.
Right. How much is, what's the grand total? Ninety-six thousand, seven twelve.
So for the remainder of the year, it's ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and twelve?
Right. Right. That'll vary based on when they're hired.
Okay.
Is there a second to that amendment? Okay. We have an amendment to amend it to ninety-six, seven twelve, made by Councilman Katanzerite. It was seconded by Councilman Fig. Is there any further council discussion on the amendment? Hearing non clerk, will you please take the role on the amendment?
Yes. Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
And Mr. President Root?
Yes.
That passes nine-zero.
The record show that the amendment was passed by a vote of nine to zero. It now becomes part of the public hearing on this bill.
President Morton, just to, just to be clarified, that's the total cost, the ninety-six thousand, seven twelve.
Including benefits.
Yeah.
President Root?
No.
Okay. Well, that's prorated for three quarters.
Yes.
So that's probably a little high, but we'll spend less than that. That should be okay.
Mr. Murphy, it's President Root, I was demoted.
What's that?
You said President Morton.
Oh. I do that every meeting, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get out of there.
Just adding a little levity, that's all.
That said, we are now ready for a public hearing on bill number 44-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any part of bill 44-23? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to any part of bill 44-23? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed on bill number 44-23. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Shetzel. Any further council discussion on bill 44-23? As amended. Thank you. Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the bill on, or take the role on the bill?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes, except for Q, even as amended.
Except for Q, okay. Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes, except for Q.
Okay. Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes, except for item Q.
Okay. And President Root?
Yes.
So it passes nine-zero, except for Q, which I believe passes six-three.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 44-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero, except for part Q, which was passed by a vote of six to three. That concludes fiscal matters. Next up are the American Rescue Plan funds. Clerk, will you please read bill 51-23?
Bill number 51-23, an ordinance appropriating monies from the American Rescue Plan Fund for the purpose herein specified for the department here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
Thank you. Mr. Shetzel, committee report, please.
Bill 5123 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
I can speak to that if you'd like.
Sure.
Hit the, hit the podium or?
Nah.
Okay, this is the, the American Rescue Plan money has all been obligated, basically. This is to balance things out. We reduced the line item for the lobby renovation from four hundred thousand to eight hundred eighty, to three hundred and twenty thousand. That's because that's what the bid came in at, a little bit less than three hundred and twenty thousand. So we reduced that line item. We've also reduced the line item for special COVID expenditures by thirty-four thousand, six twenty-eight. That's for like sanitation masks and that kind of thing. Those costs have actually been a lot lower than you, as you would expect for the last, last prior years. So that's a reduction in the budget of a hundred and fourteen thousand, six twenty-eight. So that balances out the budget for 2023.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number 51-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, the public hearing on 51-23 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Is there any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill 51-23 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read our next bill, please?
Sure. Bill number 57-23, an ordinance appropriating money from the American Rescue Plan Fund for the purposes herein specified for the department here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
Thank you. Committee report, please, Mr. Shetzel?
Bill 5723 comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner? Mr. Dalton?
Counsel, you will recall that a month ago, we looked at a proposal for Portage Manor that was a much larger appropriation. This appropriation in front of you at your request has been stripped down to only feature the bonuses to keep our employee, our current employees working at Portage Manor employees working at Portage Manor while we are going through the process of looking at transition options. The total is one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Represents both the potential retention bonuses and the benefits that would accrue to those employees were they to stay.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Catanzerite?
Mr. Dalton, or, I don't know, commissioner leaders here, um, when the resolution was passed by the county commissioners, that said they would create a task force and pass on the ownership of Portage Manor to whomever presented a plan that was acceptable to them. They committed to two point seven million dollars of American Rescue Plan money. There's still a provision to keep that commitment if somebody would take Portage Manor over, the full amount of two point seven million. This represents a portion of that, or, and I know the, the way to do it was to take it out ARP for the employee retention bonuses. Is there still a commitment from the commissioners? I don't know if you can speak to that, or if they're here to speak to it?
I think I would prefer not to speak on behalf of the commissioners. Uh, once again, they were split. Oh, Derek, is Derek here?
He's in the hall.
Oh, is he? I can't speak for them. Maybe Derek can. I can tell you that were you to need an additional two point seven million dollars from American Rescue Plan, per the bill that Mr. Murphy just brought to you, you actually don't have that much money left in American Rescue Plan because we've committed all of it. So those dollars, uh, to make that deal whole would need to come from another source.
Thank you.
Mr. Tanner?
Mr. Dalton, actually, I've been.
I'll just stay.
Thank you. Uh, Mr., uh, retention bonuses are effective if they actually retain people. So to the, to the extent that they are retention bonuses, are those to be paid out immediately?
No.
After six months, at the time of a transition?
They must stay till the completion.
Of whatever that transition ultimately becomes?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dalton? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill number fifty-seven dash twenty-three. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Roy signs four twenty-six South Mead Street. Uh, again, I am a, have a relative that is at Portage Manor. I'm his power of attorney, having been there multiple times over the last couple of weeks, uh, to inspect what's going on over at Portage Manor and check the welfare of my uncle and other residents that are there. Uh, I feel that this goes a long way towards helping the staff and putting them at ease during this transitional period, whatever that transition looks like. Um, also, one of the questions, I guess it would be for Mr. Dalton, perhaps, is, um, if the county were to retain ownership of the facility, would these retention bonuses still be paid out? But thank you for the clarification on the other points. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill fifty-seven dash twenty-three is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Make a motion to pass the bill forward.
Second. Is that Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Shetzel. It was seconded by Mr. Tanner. Is there any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the role?
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number fifty-seven dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes the American Rescue Plan funds. Um, next up is land use planning. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-three, a resolution of the Saint Joseph County Council declaring a portion of Saint Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC six, one point one dash twelve, point one dash twelve, at sequence declaring resolution. Petitioner, AM General LLC.
Thank you. Committee report, please, Mr. Fig?
Mr. President, Bill number thirty-nine dash twenty-three comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Saint Joseph County Common Council. My name is Terry O'Brien from the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Develop, and Growth on the seventh and eleventh floor. I'm here to speak to you about AM General LLC. They have applied for a personal property and a real property tax abatement. The reason for their application is they recently received a contract from the U.S. government to produce a new vehicle. Um, that contract is for ten years. That contract calls for AM General to produce twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-two trucks and nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three trailers with an estimated value of eight point six, six billion dollars. To be able to fulfill that requirement, they need to add to their existing building approximately seventy-four thousand, uh, square feet, and they need to, uh, that expansion is going to cost approximately eight point eight billion dollars. They also need to invest in some new equipment and machinery at an estimated cost of fifty-nine point five million dollars. They're going to be establishing sixty-two stations in which the vehicle will travel through during its production. Staff is in favor of this, uh, request because this helps AM General retain approximately three hundred and seventy-one current employees, and they have indicated that over the next few years, they will be adding an additional three hundred and twenty-nine employees. Um, at the committee meeting, a question came up. Uh, Mr. Catanzerite asked, how many employees are Saint Joe County employees? And we asked AM General that question. They shared with us earlier today that sixty-one percent of their current employees reside within Saint Joseph County. Um, if there's any other additional questions, I have representatives from AM General here to answer those, and I'm also happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the petitioner or for AM General from the council? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill number thirty-nine dash twenty-three. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of the bill? Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Seeing no one, the public hearing on thirty-nine dash twenty-three is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Councilwoman Drake. It was seconded by Councilman Thomas. Any further council discussion on Bill thirty-nine dash twenty-three? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the role?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
The record show that Bill number thirty-nine dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number twenty-two dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the Saint Joseph County Council amending Title fifteen, Chapter one fifty-four, land uses of the Saint Joseph County Code to establish the Indiana Enterprise Center Overlay Zoning District. Petitioner, Saint Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Fig, committee report, please?
Mr. President, Bill number twenty-two dash twenty-three comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner or area plan?
Yes, thank you. This is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff with offices on the eleventh floor of this building. Uh, so this ordinance would effectively adopt portions of the proposed IEC overlay district, specifically those related to permitted and prohibited uses, uh, native landscaping, uh, western boundary buffer yard and screening, and, um, a portion of the landscaping standards applicable to flagship developments, those being developments of over, um, either a hundred and fifty acres or five hundred thousand square feet in building area. Um, so these are the portions of the overlay that we've already achieved broad consensus amongst the stakeholders. Uh, turning to the, um, use permissions, uh, we explicitly prohibit uses which include slaughterhouses, sewage treatment plants, mining, junkyards, metal scrap shredders, landfills, coal and nuclear power plants, and also a series of defined, uh, heavy industrial uses. And as I mentioned, we're also adopting some of the landscape standards, um, specifically, um, the requirement to use native plantings, um, this requiring fifty percent of provided deciduous trees to be native, as well as fifty percent of any flowering plants that are featured. Uh, if turf grass is provided on site, uh, at least five percent of that turfed area, um, must be planted with wild grass, or wildflowers and native grasses. Additionally, we are proposing a fifty-foot buffer which will run along the entire western boundary of the IEC core development area, um, starting at two in Willow and then running northwood, northward. Um, this buffer area, um, would need to contain, uh, trees that are planted at a rate of one tree per thirty-five feet. And the landscaping standards, which are specific to these flagship developments, um, in all cases, they exceed what would be required by the current ordinance in terms of, uh, parking. We're requiring one tree per ten spaces, and for foundation landscaping, uh, along the front facade, we are requiring, uh, one tree per fifty feet of facade, as well as one shrub per twenty feet of facade. Um, these provisions will meet one of our, one of the county's obligations under the, uh, resolutions which were adopted by the Board of Commissioners, the Redevelopment Commission, the Town of New Carlisle, as well as all of township, uh, governing the development of the core development area, uh, specifically Section three, which calls on us to identify a number of permitted uses, special exception uses, and controlled uses within this core development area. Uh, we will need to continue to work through, um, with stakeholders and the IEC Working Group, um, provisions that will come into play under our obligations in Section five, which are more specific design guidelines and standards for, um, buffer zones, setbacks, green space requirements, um, dark sky, lighting, signage, drainage, and integration of pedestrian paths and trails, as well as other, um, sustainability features. So, uh, we will continue to work through those provisions until we get buy-in from all stakeholders, and then we will, uh, be bringing that back to you at this time. Um, other than that, this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the APC and the Land Use Planning Committee, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill twenty-two dash twenty-three. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Please give your name and address. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, members of the council. Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director for Saint Joseph County, offices on seventh and eleventh floors, part of the Department of Infrastructure and Planning and Growth. Uh, we are here today to support this ordinance. This is part one of a, of a much larger ordinance that will pass at, at some point, but part one is really specific to the, uh, to the things that Sean had mentioned. Use, uh, landscape buffer on the western side of the development area and flagship projects. Flagship projects could include a project like the GM project, and, and so this ordinance has been vetted with potential flagship users. Uh, this would help those projects move forward. Um, we would ask for your approval on this ordinance tonight to help, uh, projects move forward. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Frey, President and CEO, Southland Regional Chamber, with offices at one oh one North Michigan Street here in downtown South Bend. We're the county's economic development partner here to, uh, speak in favor of this ordinance. We appreciate, uh, the chance to be at the table finally to discuss, um, the elements of this. Um, we feel like this is an, an acceptable compromise here, and we urge your support of this this evening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dan Caruso, three zero five Compton Street, New Carlisle, New Carlisle resident. Uh, it's been a frog march up the aisle. Um, everybody's been real patient with trying to get the right wording worked up, get the, all the protections in place as much as possible. Uh, there's, there's more to be made, but this is a, a great step in, in the right direction, and, uh, I support this, uh, decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing on Bill number twenty-two dash twenty-three is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Tanner. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the role?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number twenty-two dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number twenty-three dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the Saint Joseph County Council amending Title fifteen, Chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of the Saint Joseph County Code, as amended to designate the Indiana Enterprise Center Overlay District. Petitioner, Saint Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Mr. Fig, committee report, please?
Mr. President, Bill number twenty-three dash twenty-three comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff. Um, so basically, this, um, bill would take, um, the provisions that you just adopted and apply them to the geography of the IEC core development area, uh, which is highlighted on the screen there. Um, it's important to note that this would only apply to properties that are already industrially zoned, or, um, there's also one commercially zoned property owned by the county. Um, the rest of the IEC core development area, which is still zoned agricultural, um, including where the majority of the single-family homes, um, are occupied, um, that would not really be affected by this overlay. They would continue to be governed by the development standards and use standards of the, uh, agricultural district, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill twenty-three dash twenty-three. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill twenty-three day, twenty-three is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Fig. It was seconded by Councilman Morton. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the role?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
If the record show that Bill twenty-three dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of nine to zero, clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number one fifty-nine dash twenty-two, an ordinance to terminate written commitments concerning the rezoning of property generally located north of State Road Two, east of Willow Road, north and south Early Road, west of Spruce Road, together with seventy-plus or minus area parcel at the northwest corner of Early Road and Walnut Road. Petitioner, Kenneth E. Sebastian, senior, Elaine A. Sebastian, and Kenneth E. Sebastian, junior.
Thank you. Committee report, please, Mr. Fig?
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number one fifty-nine dash twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Abby Wiles, APC Director, Department of IPG, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. This is a petition to modify written commitments that were assigned to a rezoning that was approved in 2020 under ordinance sixty-six twenty. It concerns the property shown on the screen here that is owned by the Sebasties. The current written commitments, uh, are two-part. They included, they include use restrictions and language about the preservation of legally delineated wetlands on the property. The use restrictions that are shown on the written commitments will be covered by the IEC overlay ordinance that you all just adopted. The preservation of delineated wetlands, to the extent that the property contains a legally delineated wetland, uh, it should not be used for any industrial use, is the current language. What's being proposed tonight is to revise the language to be, should remain undeveloped. The, excuse me, so the use restrictions are taken care of through the IEC overlay. I apologize, the clicker is blinking. I think it's running out of batteries. Um, and then the areas in question are a, uh, area that we refer to as the mitten that is a, uh, an area that is located on State Road Two. Following a, a field delineation study by Cardno, there was a request for a jurisdictional determination by the Army Corps of Engineers. It was determined that this area doesn't meet the required, uh, three, three test parameter to be designated a, a legally delineated wetland. And then the other area that is in question is up at the northwestern part of the site, and, uh, that was not part of the original jurisdictional determination. There is no plans to develop that prop, that piece of the, uh, IEC at this time. So staff is recommending approval based on the area on State Road Two not being a legally delineated wetland, the area at the northwestern part of the site being, uh, undeveloped, and then the use restrictions being taken care of through the IEC overlay. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for area plan? Seeing none. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening. Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director, uh, part of IPG. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the petitioners. Again, as Abby mentioned, there's, there's three parts to this, uh, written commitment modification. The first is the uses. The uses have been taken care of now by the overlay. The second piece is preserving an area, uh, to remain as undeveloped, as opposed to, uh, the language that said not to be used for industrial uses. And then the third provision is really one that we think is a little bit more forward thinking. Uh, the Redevelopment Commission purchased property last year, uh, up north of Early Road, uh, on the northwest corner of Early and Walnut Road. Uh, to preserve that area, it, it's wetland, has wetland characteristics, has woods, has, has the Nespajani dits running through it. Those areas will be set aside and preserved, uh, in perpetuity as part of a larger wetland area and buffer area. So we believe that, uh, this is actually a better step, uh, than the written commitments that exist, uh, previously. We'd ask for your approval of the modification of these written commitments.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shalio? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill one fifty-nine dash twenty-two. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Please give your name and address. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening again. Mike McManus, 51940 Lilac Road. I've read this before in the documents that were published as part of the agenda for this meeting, but what alerted me to stand up here and speak was the word wetlands. I don't understand from what was just presented whether we just have a legal interpretation that there are no wetlands on here, or if there are in fact wetlands here. And I'm concerned about that, as I know many citizens are, because here in Indiana, we are giving up more and more and more and more absolutely essential wetlands. And that just shouldn't be. So if somebody could clarify whether or not this has just been a legal determination, and I'm using my hands as the quote marks around the word "legal," or whether or not the topography is actually wetlands and we're finding a way to get rid of them with some very broad interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Mr. Shalio, would you like to address the opposition?
The one with the, yep. So just as a point of clarification, so the red area, what we call the mitten, has gone through a jurisdictional determination with the Army Corps of Engineer. Two reports were prepared, one by Cardno out of Walkerton, the other by Christopher Burke Engineering. They both examined that area specifically to determine if wetland, legally defined wetland characteristics exist on that area. They do not, that area does not meet the requirement for a legally delineated wetland. The area in blue is an area that we believe has characteristics that could make it a wetland, but we haven't gone through the legal determination to determine if it is or it is not. From our perspective, we don't really have an issue with it being is or isn't, because it'll be an area that will be preserved and protected. So the area, again, in red, is determined to be not a legally defined wetland.
Public hearing on Bill number 159-22 is now closed. Is there a motion on this bill?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilman Tanner. It was seconded by Councilman Shetzel. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Catanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. With the record show that Bill number 159-22 was passed by a vote of nine to zero, clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number 160-22, an ordinance to terminate written commitments concerning the rezoning of property located at 56340 Willow, 56458 Willow Road, and 31917 State Road 3. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission.
Mr. Fig, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number 160-22 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Abby Wiles, APC Director. This property, or this petition concerns property owned by the redevelopment commission. It was rezoned to industrial in 2021, and similar to the last petition, had commitments assigned to the rezoning that were very similar to what we just discussed. There were written commitments that addressed, or that included use restrictions that, again, will be covered through the IEC overlay. There was also language about preservation of legally delineated wetlands, and there are none on this property, which is why the petitioner is requesting termination of the commitments. There is a third requirement about an 80-foot-wide landscape buffer measured from the center line of Willow Road. You heard Sean talk about that during the IEC overlay in terms of the western boundary buffer that is now 50 feet from the property line, which gives an additional 10 feet and a tree every 35 feet. So the written commitments that are a part of the redevelopment commission property, use restrictions will be taken care of through the overlay. The termination of the written commitment for legally delineated wetland will be removed because there are none, and the western buffer will be addressed through the overlay.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council for area plan? Seeing none, petitioner?
Good evening. Bill Shalio, I'm here representing the petitioner, the redevelopment commission, on this written commitment termination request. As Abby mentioned, there were three provisions to this written commitment. The first was the uses. Those were taken care of by the overlay. Second was preservation of legally delineated wetlands. And on those three parcels at the northeast corner of Willow and State Road 2, there are no legally delineated wetlands. The third relates to the buffer provision that we had put in as part of the overlay. Instead of just a buffer provision just for those three parcels, or really that parcel along Willow Road, the new ordinance will require a 50-foot buffer all the way along Willow Road and all the way along the west part of any development that occurs in this area. So the overlay actually provides for more protection than the written commitment did. We would ask for your favorable approval on the termination of these written commitments. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from Mr. Shalio? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 160-22. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill 160-22 is now closed. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Fig. It was seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Catanz, right?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. With the record show that Bill number 160-22 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read our next bill?
Bill number 41-23, an ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County, public way or public place. Petitioner, Deborah Lukowski.
Thank you. Mr. Fig, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number 41-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Thank you. This is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff. So this is a petition to vacation the highlighted alley you see on the screen. It's a east-west alley between White Street and Eastview Drive, between Neely and Glenwood Avenue. The alley right-of-way is unimproved. The county has no intention of improving it. It currently does not provide access to any of the abutting parcels, and each of these parcels do have access from an improved street right-of-way. There are four grounds on which someone can remonstrate to a proposed public way vacation. I did speak to a property owner abutting this alley this afternoon who expressed some concerns related to his desire to someday gain rear access from this alley to aid with development and potentially sale, that being the vacant lot to and from White Street, which is possible. The county isn't going to ever really pay for that development or any sort of upkeep, but I believe he will be on Zoom for the public hearing. Other than that, the petitioner is also on Zoom, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council for area plan? Seeing none, petitioner?
Yes. No questions.
Do you have anything to add?
Just that I've been here, living here with my husband since 2013. There's nothing back there. The gentleman that lives next door, I mean, he just, if there's any way they could just leave that part open and give the rest of us the surrounding alleyway, that would be great. That way everybody would be happy. I'm not sure how that would work.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll move on to public hearing on Bill number 41-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one in the room, is there anyone online?
Yes. My name is Joel Friesner, and I live, I have property adjacent to the petitioner, and I'm the one that was referred to earlier.
Sir, we need your name and address for the record, please.
Joel Friesner. Address is 56801 White Street.
Go ahead.
I have a vacant lot right now that's between my improved lot and the petitioner's lot, and they're long and narrow, so, and heavily wooded right now. Should I try to sell that without being able to access the back? The lots are so narrow, it doesn't leave you hardly any room to build a residential. Nobody's going to build a business there. And without the access to the back, they certainly would have to just plain drive through their yard. So if you could amend the petition to just vacate from the east edge of the petitioner's property on through to Eastview, that's perfect for us and for the petitioner also, because we would still have access. And there's another neighbor that hasn't started yet because of the high cost and the COVID, and you can't find anybody to build anything. But he intends to build a home on the north side of that unimproved alley. And he's got, he's got more length along that than what I do even really, or it's about equal, because the property lines line up. So if we could possibly just make that change, just don't vacate the whole thing. Just vacate the part that they need to have vacated and on through Eastview, because, or Eastview, because the rest of that alley is, the topography is a hill. You couldn't drive on it if you wanted to. So it's really moot whether the rest of the alley is used or not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I guess I'd be curious, public hearing on Bill number 41-23 is now closed. I guess I'd be interested in hearing area plan's thoughts on that suggestion.
Yeah, so the legal description could definitely be amended, just so it goes to the east end of the petitioner's property. We had a question for your legal counsel as to whether you would want to do that on the fly today, or potentially hold it, and then we'll come back with a revised ordinance.
Fly. That's just me.
Sounds good.
May I have a motion from the council?
Motion to amend?
Second. Motion to table.
I'm sorry.
Motion to...
Put it on table. Table it.
Second.
Sorry.
Motion to table was made by Mr. Fig. It was seconded by Mr. Thomas. Any further comment on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Bill number 41-23 is tabled. Thank you. Clerk, will you please read our next bill?
Bill number 42-23, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 land usage, Chapter 154, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at 12525 Anderson Road, from our single-family district to O office district. Petitioner, Miller Family Development Company.
Mr. Fig?
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 42-23 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area plan?
Abby Wiles, APC Director. The subject property is proposed to be rezoned from single-family to office. It's at the northwest corner of Bittersweet and Anderson. Around it is, to the west and south are residential subdivisions. To the east is a fire station, Clay Fire, and to the north, industrially zoned property. In 2003, the site was rezoned from residential to office for a similar use, but a deed restriction or restrictive covenants in place prevented it from being able to be built for an office use, and it was rezoned back to single-family in 2016. So here we are today, rezoning it to office. The restrictive covenants are privately held and enforced. It doesn't have, you're not obligated to deny the rezoning because of them. And it's my understanding, or it's staff's understanding that the petitioner has begun the process to remove the covenants. The current property is an undeveloped land. As previously noted, it's at the intersection of Anderson and Bittersweet. Here's a view on Bittersweet looking north, and a photo showing the proposed architectural style and what the development would look like. The site plan has an approximate 6,400 square foot building, parking, and would need to go through commercial plan review and meet all the developmental standards of the zoning It comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with a 8O favorable recommendation and favorable recommendation from the Land Use Committee. It's consistent with the comp plan to promote the development of the community and neighborhood character. The current conditions of the immediate area are a mix of residential, commercial, and industrial uses to the north. It is a low impact, or it is a lower impact transitional use in terms of what you would want adjacent to residential. We did have one person speak in favor. It was Ron Melser, Fire Marshal for Clay Fire, who asked for accommodations for access for fire vehicles. And then one person spoke against at the APC hearing, but mostly was just concerned about traffic on Bittersweet Road. And then we did receive three letters in opposition to the petition that were provided to you via email. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council for area plan? Seeing none, petitioner?
Yeah, Terry Lane from the Whitman Company. Our address is 1402 Mishawaka Avenue in South Bend. Represent the petitioner, the Miller Family Development Company. The developer here, Mr. Miller, has met with the adjacent property owner to the west, and they've worked out an agreement to landscape and put up the appropriate opaque fencing along the western property line. As Abby had indicated, the office use is a good transition between the residential to the south and west. To the north is, in fact, industrially zoned property and used as such, and the fire department is located immediately to the east. So the plan was modified from the original plan to start with to accommodate the fire department, wanted a flow-through for fire department access through there. The site plan that you see right there, the space will be flex space, and the size will be determined by what an intended lease person would be. But with the office use, you're going to be looking at the type of uses that would be maybe an insurance office, accounting office, low-traffic type things. The plan has been put together to be able to provide the appropriate parking, and will comply with the landscaping requirements of St. Joseph County. And I'd like to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number 42-23. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Please give your name and address. You have three minutes to address the council.
My name's Dennis Miller. I run Miller Family Development. My office is at 806 Green Pine Court, Mishawaka. I've watched this property for many years. It got developed in 1985, and nothing's ever been done with it other than rezoning it, and then rezoning it back and rezoning it. So it's definitely an appropriate use from industrial to residential, as well as, I think, a needed product in the growing Granger area. But it's been almost four... But it's been, uh, almost forty years that they've not collected much in the way of taxes on it because it never got developed because of its location next to industrial and, uh, residential. So, uh, they've missed out on about three hundred thousand dollars in tax revenues over that period of time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition? Public hearing on bill number forty-two dash twenty-three is now closed. May I have a motion? Move for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton. It was seconded by Mr. Shetzel. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll? Oh, um, Mr. Kandray.
Just wanted to make a comment. Um, Mr. Miller has a development in my district on twenty-three and twenty-sixth street, State Road twenty-three and twenty-sixth, and he does, that development's very similar to what this is going to look like in terms of the site plan from what I'm understanding. And it's a, uh, quality development at twenty-sixth and twenty-three in Maple Lane. And, uh, he does do good work. I've seen his work before and I would support the passage of this bill tonight.
Thank you. Any further council comment or discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please now take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Kandzirite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number forty-two dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number twenty-one dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title fifteen land usage, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for the property located at one, six, seven, zero, zero, Cleveland Road from our single-family district to O office district. Petitioner, The Rinks Group LLC.
Mr. Fig, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number twenty-one dash twenty-three comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Area, area plan?
Yes, Sean Klein, area plan commission staff. Uh, so this is a rezoning petition to rezone the highlighted parcel from our single-family district, uh, to O office. It's on the, uh, south side of Cleveland, just outside of, uh, Mishawaka. Um, it was actually previously, uh, zoned OB office buffer up until two thousand and twenty, uh, when it was rezoned to allow for an adult care facility. Uh, those plans have since fallen through and now the plan is to rezone it to office to allow for a salon use. Um, there are single-family zoned parcels to the north across Cleveland and across an unimproved right of way to the west. Uh, but everything to the east is zoned, uh, OB office buffer already. And then the one parcel to the south that is zoned, our single-family, that's undeveloped and it's under combined ownership with one of the office buffer parcels that fronts on, um, on twenty-three there. Uh, so here is the existing building on site. There's also, um, a fourteen-spot parking lot. Site plan shows that they're going to continue to use the existing building and parking lot. Uh, this came from the area plan commission with a favorable recommendation. This area is generally suitable for the, the limited, um, office and commercial uses that the office district offers, as it is a transition area between, um, the our single-family district and the heavier commercial uses, uh, to the east. Um, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council for area plan? Hearing none. Petitioner?
Uh, yes, this is Noah Rinks with The Rinks Group. Um, just wanted to say thank you for hearing the petition and, um, we feel like this would, um,
Sir, can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, it's Noah Rinks. Um, uh, five, one, eight, four, zero, West Gate House Drive, South Bend, Indiana. Yes.
But just, no, thank you for just hearing our petition.
And, um, we recently have had some interest in, uh, converting this space back to, um, commercial use and would love to see it as a salon in that area.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on twenty-one dash twenty-three. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, public hearing on bill number twenty-one dash twenty-three is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill? Move for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass was made by Mr. Morton. It was seconded by Mr. Tanner. Any further council discussion on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Kandzirite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine, zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number twenty-one dash twenty-three was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our hearings on land use bills. Next is any unfinished business? Next is any new business? Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes, to items not on tonight's agenda. I would remind you that this is public comment, not necessarily a public discussion. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Dr. Donald Westerhausen, Jr. I live at five, two, three, four, six, Spring Arbor Court in Granger. I've been a practicing physician, caring for our community for the last thirty years. I strongly support public health, and despite the wishes of one council member, SB four, a public health infrastructure law, will be passed by the General Assembly this year. It's got passed out of ways and means tonight. Uh, my hope is that this county council will opt in for state funds for our county's nationally-known Department of Public Health and the people of this county. To that end, I would like to read an excerpt from the viewpoint in the South Bend Tribune from April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. It was submitted by the Association of Indiana Counties, the Indiana Association of County Commissioners, the Indiana County Councils Association, and Accelerate Indiana Municipalities. Indiana's proposal to invest hundreds of millions of dollars in public health would improve Hoosiers' health and lower healthcare costs, making our state more attractive to businesses seeking workers and a place to locate. This proposal will bring funding for public health in Indiana from its current level of fifty-five dollars per capita, which is woefully low, to close to the national average of ninety-one dollars. It was built based on transparent, thoughtful consideration by the Governor's Public Health Commission. The sixteen-member commission included state officials, local elected officials, former state and national elected officials, and private sector representatives, who spent months examining Indiana's health metrics and public health system and making recommendations to approve our state's fiscal and, and financial, uh, well-being. The commission recognized that a lack of state funding for public health in Indiana has created disparities in the availability of public health services across the state. These disparities, this disparities have contributed to high rates of obesity, smoking, infant mortality, and a life expectancy that has been declining since two thousand and ten, putting Indiana now two years below the U.S. average for life expectancy and heavily impacting worker, working age Hoosiers. We support Governor Halken's proposal to rectify the situation through significant and sustainable state investment in local public health. Key elements of this proposal are home rule, is honored with the opportunity for local elected officials to opt into additional public health funding and that authority over public health services will remain with the local jurisdiction. We are encouraged that the additional funding will be based at the local level in ways decided by local officials. Every county has unique needs and partnerships, and decisions about public health services and delivery must be made by the local, at the local level in collaboration with public health officials, elected officials, providers, and community organizations. So when this comes around, um, later in the year, I hope all of you are able to opt in on this because most of the things that are in the governor's commission are things that are already being, being done in St. Joe County. We should be using state funds for this, not local funds. Thank you.
Cheryl Nix, one, seven, nine, zero, one, Sable Ridge Drive, Clay Township. I would like to continue, uh, reading from this viewpoint that Dr. Westerhausen just cited, entitled, "Let's Invest in Better Health: Quality of Life for All Hoosiers." And again, this was submitted on behalf of the Association of Indiana Counties, the Indiana Association of County Commissioners, the Indiana County Councils Association, and Accelerate Indiana Municipalities. It goes on to say, "Improving the health of Indiana's citizens, county by county, in both our urban and rural areas is essential to maintaining our status as a state that thrives. Rather than spending more every year on treating chronic disease and injuries, Indiana must focus on building its public health infrastructure and going upstream to prevent these issues. Counties cannot fund these services on their own, however. Most local public health funding currently comes from local property taxes with some supplemental funds from the state. And funding varies widely by county, ranging from one dollar and twenty-five cents to eighty-three dollars per person. Even after state tax cuts, Indiana is well-positioned to close this gap and transform the state's public health system into a modern and robust system that will improve the health and well-being of Hoosiers. We believe the best way to do that is to fund public health in the amount requested in Holcomb's budget proposal and ensure that this funding is awarded in a sustainable appropriation cycle that supports the development and implementation of vital public health programs. We encourage state lawmakers to recognize that the return on a robust and sustainable state investment in public health, while measured over time, will be significant and benefit counties of all sizes. By making this investment, we can improve the health and quality of life for all Hoosiers, reduce, reduce healthcare costs, and make Indiana a more desirable place to locate a family or a business. And I would just like to add personally how much I support our St. Joseph County Health Department, who are, who are, they are doing the work through their community health workers and in other avenues, including their environmental work, to keep us safe and healthy, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. Before I start, I would like you guys' permission. My daughter is an interpreter for the deaf, and the NAACP would like to make sure that everyone has a right to be able to understand what is being said. So with your permission, is it okay if she stands over there?
That's fine.
Everyone has a right to good health, and first of all, let me back up. Trina Robinson, nine, fourteen, Lincoln Way West, NAACP president. Everyone has a right to good health and well-being. Individual health does not exist in a vacuum. It is tied to the community conditions in which we are born, grow, live, work, and age. For people of color, geography, income, and race are longstanding predictors of health outcomes. To improve health and well-being, policymakers must act to address inequalities, infrastructure, and social, and social determinants of health that contributes to the poor health. If you, as an elected official, are unwilling to address the fact that there are inequalities, you do not have the well-being of the community in which you serve. For any of you to try to dismantle or minimize the fact that it begins with quality equity to bridge the disparity gap, is reckless and heartless. I read a CDC article, and one of the things it mentioned was, "Communities can prevent health disparities when community and faith-based organizations, employers, healthcare systems, and providers, public health agencies, and policymakers work together to develop policies, programs, and systems based on, uh, based on a health equity framework and community needs." For the council member that won their seat by thirty-five votes, it was mentioned that, and I would like to say, that if you, if you don't better understand the importance of health and thinking that pertaining to equity needs to be removed, let me just give you a news flash. Health inequality is due to human-made systems and structures that privileges certain groups, yet underserved or act, or actively oppress others. It is as if you are saying systemic racism does not exist. Shame on you. The NAACP is committed to ending racial health disparities. Our aim is not simple disease prevention, but to create an inclusive culture of healthy people and communities. We will continue to collaborate with our community and other organizations to improve the social determinants of health. We will disrupt the status quo. Thank you.
Good evening. Denny McIntyre, one, zero, nine, seven, oh, Anderson Road, Granger. I'd like to address the council regarding the Anderson Road Highway project. There's a whole lot of list of issues of both environmental and quality of life issues with putting a highway garage in that location. To discuss that would take a lot longer than three minutes. I'm not sure whose plan it was, but putting a highway garage next to a county park is an ill-conceived idea. As our county, as our elected county council, you control the funding for this project. The county parks board has a mission statement. It's what their operating decisions are determined by. Tying the county parks funding to a highway garage has put them in direct conflict with this mission statement. To be blunt, in essence, you are holding the county parks board political hostage. You, the county council, the county commissioners, need to rethink this project and fund this proposed park without a kind of highway garage tied to it. Thank you.
Emily Trauch, one, zero, five, two, one, Fawnwoods Court, Granger. I would also like to speak on behalf of my fellow residences that will be directly impacted by this highway garage MOU. I, I would like to make this very clear to you all. We do not want to park if it means a highway garage goes along with it. The fact that these two ideas merge to be a part of the same proposal, like my friend here had mentioned, is blasphemous to the Parks Department and their mission statement. I would also agree that you, as councilmen and the commissioners, are knowingly holding the Parks Department hostage. Dan, we know that this proposal was created before your election. You also have had many opportunities to stop it. You've had opportunities to use your voice for your constituents in District C and fight for us, but you have seemingly turned a blind eye. Yet you tout that you have multiple, multitude of constituents that are in favor of this garage that have emailed or called you. I would challenge you to show us these supposed emails that you claim exist. We, as a community, have yet to come across anyone in Granger who is in favor of this highway garage at Anderson and Beach. You continue to dismiss the element of human error, which is the most crucial point in all of this. No human is perfect. No one's spill or cleanup will ever be perfect. Why will you not acknowledge this? Why must this garage be in this exact location? Why are we building something that is several minutes away from the Michigan border but is still being couched as a great way to provide quicker service to the people of Granger? Why are the rules being changed for this garage, but it's being recognized that the garage off of Cleveland Road is hazardous and not reusable? You acknowledge that the future of the Cleveland garage is to leave it alone because of the five years it takes for cleanup, but apparently we can just ride it out on Anderson and Beach Road and hope for the best? It's not hypoc, is, is it not hypocritical that the commissioners just approved a bid this morning for an environmental services team to investigate salt contamination? Why are you willing to bring salt contamination to your constituents? We demand honest answers from you. There has to be alternatives. Your job is to do just that. That's why we elected you, to be a problem solver and to be someone who protects the people. I want to make it clear that a good councilman, under any circumstances, would never build something that would just, in quotes, "unlikely" contaminate drinking water. The health of a councilman's constituents should never be up for debate, gamble, or chance, no matter how small you may think the risk is. Please do the right thing and work with our community and the nine hundred-plus people who are petitioning the designation of the garage and help us find a new location for the highway garage. We can only hope that during all this pushback from the community that you have put the time, attention, and care about the location of this garage and where it should go, like you should have done in the beginning. How you decide to handle this going forward will be your defining moment and legacy as a councilman. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien, just a question. Are we, anything on Portage Manor was on the agenda tonight, am I correct?
Yes, with regard to the retention warrants.
Thank you.
So that leaves other topics or questions open, is that correct?
Mr. O'Brien? Mr. O'Brien?
Depends how broad the court began to issue this. Since the Portage Manor was on the table this evening, it's just probably a period.
We'll allow it, but I need you to not speak to anything that was addressed tonight.
Roger that, Mr. President. Roy Sines, 426 South Mead Street. One of the questions that I think is still out there with the concern for the residents is their ADLs and their abilities, and that the community, or that some of the legislatures, some of the counselors and some of the commissioners are under the impression that they're getting services elsewhere, or have the ability to get services elsewhere. In addition to that, this is not a stagnant problem. It's a fluid problem, and these individuals will be in our community until the end of time, as far as we know. With that being said, at one of the previous meetings, one of the counselors asked who would have their loved one at Portage Manor. Well, you couldn't see me because I was on Zoom, but I raised my hand, because they had no other options. Let me give you an example of what today was like in getting an evaluation. This has been a two-month process, working through the VA to get a higher evaluation so that we can identify potential other options. The VA does not automatically have housing for veterans. You have to either be serving during a combat era or be rated at 70% or higher as a veteran to be eligible for housing assistance. So this process started by submitting online, which a lot of individuals do not have the capability or access to Internet who fall in this category. In addition to doing that online, the evaluators, the VA sends it to a third party. That third party then sends me a text message. I call back to them. They can't answer my questions because the health side of the VA did not send over the Form 100137, which is the power of attorney form. So I have to go back, and we have to wait. It's a delayed a week to be able to get care there. So then I call them today. Level one, level two. Get to level two, they hung up on me. I call back, level one, level two. They finally are able to schedule one appointment. The other appointment that they plan to schedule is all the way in Fort Wayne, because that's the closest they can get. My loved one does not have the ability to be in an automobile for two hours just for an evaluation that will last less than 20 minutes. In addition to that, so then they have to send it back to the VA. So I now had to call the VA, 20 minutes on the phone with the VA, and the transfer process, because they're working remotely, that got hung up on. So now my next recourse is to go to the congressman and be able to get a congressional inquiry done, to make improvements to this process. So for those of you who think that this is an easy process for individuals with mental health and challenges, it is not. That is just one day for today. That does not include the opportunity to try and go through real services, which we've been through that process four times. So I just want you to keep in mind that there are some folks out there that will need this facility and the services it provides. Thank you.
Can I ask Mr. Sines a question? I don't know what an ADL is.
That's Independence of Daily Living Skills.
IADL?
IADLs, yes.
IADL?
Yes. And so, to qualify for Medicaid, you have to not be able to do those things, which include being able to manage your appointments, manage your medications, pay your bills, your finances. To qualify for Medicaid, you have to not be able to do your ADLs, which is your active daily living skills, so that your bathing, moving from toilet to chair to bed, showering, and those types of things. So there, one's about cognitive ability, the other one's about physical ability.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Weldy, 16657 Cleveland Road, and I just want to rise in support of the council for at least taking on the thorny problem of relocating the county garage on Cleveland. And this has been a problem that has been created by previous administrations in the design and construction of a facility that has lent itself to significant contamination. And I don't know where the ideal site is, but I know it can't stay there because it is actively, it's actively contaminating that area and that community, and there are people that live by the current location. So I want to thank you for all the slings and arrows you're taking, and I appreciate the fact that you're dealing with a problem that has been ignored for years and years. So best of luck.
Thank you.
Hi, Craig Coburn McDonald, 6223 Winslow Court. I stand in the same position as Roy. My sister's a walkie-talkie. She can function daily. She does everything except make her appointments, cook her own meals, can't get her own meds. If she's pushed out of this facility, or if she is relocated, as we're saying, her closest place is over two hours away also. That's a long way to go to take my sister to church. I just want you guys to know that it's not that easy to place these people. It took me almost two years to get her into Portage Manor, which is the only facility here. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Brad Loney Yellow, 10456 Charles Street, Osceola, Indiana. I just want to come here, I know I've been talking to a few of you guys, and I messaged a few, and I haven't heard back anything. I appreciate you guys looking into this. Ordinance 9013, I have some comments I'd like to publicly bring out. If you guys have any questions, hit me. 9013, Part A, in the county, we're only allowed to have six chickens. It doesn't matter, you know, we can't have more than six chickens as far as land is concerned. So even in the city, we can have six chickens. Our parcels in the county are double, triple, quadruple, huge. So it says in the county, we're only allowed to have six chickens, the same amount of chickens in the city. We have much larger parcels. Not in agreement with that at all. I believe that chickens are a fundamental freedom that we purchase and pay to feed and then return farm-fresh eggs, and literally no difference than my stock pond. But anybody checks to see, nobody checks to see in my fish, like, should we implement this too? Like, am I feeding them? If I don't care for my chickens, water, structure, to keep them safe, then they die. We lose all of our pesticide-free benefits. I don't understand why we need to pay anyone to send photographic evidence that our chickens have food and water. If this is the thing, should we not adopt this policy for everyone? Like a blanket policy, like the six-chicken provision from South Bend to St. Joe County? Make everybody pay for their $20 photographic evidence to the St. Joseph County Humane Society that their cats or dogs are well taken care of? Part C of 9013, "I don't believe no contractor in St. Joseph County should be allowed to steal our property without showing just cause, not providing the basic elements of care. No other provision should qualify for illegal robbery, i.e. permits, inspections, monetary gain for said contractor." Not in agreement with that at all. I don't understand why I need to report to anybody about my chickens. Part D of 9013, "No one in St. Joseph County nor the average constituents have five acres." Five acres is a lot of land. I don't know anybody in St. Joe County with five acres of land. I think it's an unrealistic requirement, hence this ordinance was re- amended in 2017, but I think it still needs work. I think roosters should be allowed, as there's no difference between my neighbor's barking dog than my rooster that crawls once or twice a day. In the county.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
We should have the right to free-range our chickens on our property, not just keep them as prisoners, as there are many benefits to chickens that free-range with health purposes. Hawk comes down and gets one of my chickens, guess what? I gotta buy a new chicken or procreate one. You know, I don't think that's anybody's business.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Good evening. Deborah Doral, 21677 Arton Road, South Bend. Thank you again for your work tonight. I would like to offer a public thank you to some of the employees and consultants who have been doing the hard work of sorting through all of the challenges on some of these projects. In particular, I would like to thank Abby Wiles, Director of Area Plan, Sean Klein, also with Area Plan, Bill Shalil with IPG, Jared Huss with Lawson Fisher, Matt Miersman, the St. Joe River Basin Commission Director, Mark Espich with the Health Department, and also regarding the SB 4014 bill that is working to remove Class III wetland protections, which is attached secretly to a septic bill, Senator Niesigoski, who is removing his name from that bill as it goes to damaging St. Joe County and the broader state wetlands. All of these people, including John Richardson with Cardinals Dantek, and Allison Clement with the Army Corps of Engineer, have done very high-quality water protection work, and they have met with I and other members of the public to help us understand the extensive, complicated, overlapping regulations and jurisdictions that go to our current area. So we have some very high-quality people working to protect these things for us in the public, and we have some people at the legislature working to undo those protections. So please keep in mind SB 4014 is not something that supports this county. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Manus, I'm still doing it, 51940 Lilac Road. I'm a bit puzzled by the reaction of one person on the dais to the words spoken by Ms. Robinson earlier before, in particular when she used the word equity. I think everyone in this room understands that the origin of the word publicis, public, means everyone, and it means everyone equally. I am in an exceptionally good position in that Medicare and the supplemental insurance that I can afford in retirement pays for most of my medical care. Many, many, many people in this community do not have the same advantages. As part of the public, I am happy to pay taxes to make sure that our public health system remains a jewel of this county. And I only moved here recently, as I've explained to some of you before, in retirement, and one of the reasons that old people like me come to a place like St. Joseph County is that we know, as we get older, there is a Board of Public Health that is looking out not only for us, but for all of the people in the county. So please keep that in mind. The Board of Health here is just a jewel, and they're essential for the health of all of us.
Hi. Lisa Ticondeross, 54548 Whitetail Drive, Mishwaka. There was a lot of overreach in the Department of Health by Dr. Einharts and Dr. Fox throughout the time, and they were trying to grow it out of control by turning it into a political activist group, is what I felt. We just need to get back to the basics and focus on serving our citizens. Getting back to basics and serving the citizens does not mean overreaching personal responsibility or not giving true informed consent to parents and a guarantee of do no harm. Regarding any vaccines for their children, give them real informative information of possible side effects that can be caused by all the vaccines, especially the CB-19 that is not safe and effective, and especially not in children. Nor is the Gardasil HPV vaccine that they want to create vaccine clinics for, for all the nine-to-12-year-olds in all the schools. Parents, do your own research, and don't be coerced into giving this without research, and stop turning everything into political advocacy like abortion. Abortion is not healthcare, and our Public Health Department wants to include that. Funding is available, overreach is going to be pushed with the funding available, and we need transparency in all government offices and what that's going to be used for. The development of your extreme programs and protocols like the vaccine clinics and dictates upon our children is overreach into our families' health business. It's frankly not your business, our Health Department. Or give them the truth of the real information when you want to do these things. Public health put our kids behind Plexiglas, kept them out of school, masked them, ruined their mental health, and destroyed their education. The time to return to the best of normal is now, to reestablish prudent policy.
Ma'am, thank you. Your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Kathleen Fox, 130 Friendship Lane, Walkerton, Indiana. We're like that illegitimate stepchild down there, hangs down at the bottom of your county. Sometimes we feel ignored, but now that we have a new council member, not so much so. But anyway, in addressing some of the things that were mentioned here today, I agree 100%. The Health Department did demonstrate tremendous overreach, and that's not what our Health Department is for, and that's what we felt down in Walkerton. Mandating masks and the fear of mandating vaccines, it's just, that's ridiculous. And the saddest part of all, I think, is to witness our colleagues up here who work so hard, and as was witnessed tonight with all the things that they've had to decide on, to have them under fire, and it's just discouraging and actually disgusting to see the things, the names that they're called, and the things that are implied when a person wants to stand for truth and when they want to do what's right. I think it's good for the Health Department to consider getting back to basics, and let's look at what we were created for, let's start there, and maybe build from there, build a nice, strong Health Department we can be proud of. So I just wanted to congratulate you guys on the tremendous job that you're doing and are tackling very difficult jobs between the salt and Portage Manor and our Health Department. Those are really sticky issues, and I don't doubt one moment that you're working sincerely and very hard at it, and I thank you for it.
Can I address Ms. Fox?
Mr. Katanji, Mrs. Fox, I will tell you, this is public comment. You don't have to respond to any comment or question by a council member, but a council member does want to address something you said. But you have no obligation to respond if you choose not to. This is your time to speak, not ours.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, we haven't forgot about Walkerton, and we do, even though I don't live in Walkerton.
Oh, I know. It just sometimes feels like it, but we.
We do think about Walkerton a lot. In fact, I think this council last year, the previous council, we helped send several million dollars to Walkerton in a way of United Way.
Yeah, we get an $83,000 grant just recently, some ARP money.
We partnered with United Way to get a community center built in Walkerton.
Yes, exactly.
So we do think about you guys.
Yep, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? Curt Sheebish, 50825 Michigan Road. I would like to suggest that we revisit a couple of city zoning I would like to suggest that we revisit a couple of city zoning commission ordinances that were passed in two thousand and five. Abby, whoops, we're having a problem here. The Section one five four point six two zero, C, one, B, A and B, I'm sorry. And basically it's saying that you can have no trailer on your property over more than twelve foot, if you're in a single R zoning. It kind of affects me, because I have several play trailers using, one for a race car, one for a rally car, and one for hauling my dirt bikes. I'd like to get this resolved, I would really hope that we could revisit this and maybe rewrite this, because this really includes a lot of other trailers, i.e. boat trailers, pontoon trailers, people who have show cars and stuff like that. It kind of really takes us out of a step here.
Sir, you said city ordinances?
No, county zoning.
You said city.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to.
Okay, so you are referring to county ordinance?
Yes, county ordinance.
Mr. Schibish?
Yes, sir.
I had a constituent get ahold of me too, about the same issue, and I have talked to Ms. Wiles and her staff, and I think there is some thought about the possibility of considering modifying that ordinance, because a lot of people do have recreational trailers for other purposes, they're longer than twelve feet. So there is, you're not the only person impacted by it, and I think Area Plan Commissioner, the zoning department's looking at some options out there to maybe modify the ordinance, or if we would take the action as a council, because there's a lot of folks in the county that do like to recreate, and involves a trailer quite often.
Correct.
So, your concern's not falling on deaf ears, I'll say that.
Okay, well, thank you for that, I would greatly appreciate it, and hopefully Abby, Ms. Wiles, I'm sorry, and I can come to an agreement on my situation.
Or maybe a compromise?
Yeah, compromise, I'm sorry, did I say agreement? Have a good evening, thank you for everything.
Good evening, Dan Caruso, three zero five Compton Street, New Carlisle. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I'm hearing vile words again. People saying, words are dividing us. The one word that divides me from other people is when somebody says, oh, you're woke. I'm sorry that y'all weren't aware of racism, you weren't aware of inequities, you weren't aware that there were changes, that I've been aware of my whole life. I just don't speak of them unless I have to. To say that you have awakened me to racism, and I'm talking about equity, because it's an argument that somebody's making nowadays, is just wrong. It is, it's ignorant to, as far as the masks and the vaccine and all that, you say the Health Department was overreaching? I did all the reading, yes, I do read myself. I don't listen to anybody on Fox News tell me what I should and shouldn't do. I read, I make my own decisions, my children were vaccinated, I was vaccinated, I wore masks, I did the best thing for what I read, I was informed, I wasn't woke, I've been awake my whole life. Thank you.
Public outburst will not be tolerated?
I'm Rosalind Clark from eight oh three Forest Avenue. I also had no intention of speaking, but I would like to agree with the gentleman who just spoke, and with Mr. McManus, who lives on Lilac Road. I think the Health Department that we have had this last year or so has done a wonderful job. They don't limit themselves to a few things, like making sure that restaurants are sanitary, which of course is a very good thing to do. They look at the causes of health disparities, which are social conditions, and they look at the psychological causes, and the causes that produce ill health. They don't wait till the ill health is already there, and then try to put a Band-Aid on it. They have been trying, as this man just pointed out, America and Indiana and St. Joe County are, it's full of racism and inequities, and it's not us especially, it's countrywide, of course. And for several hundred years, there have been disparities. And we are now trying to bring them to public attention and improve the Health Department, the health care for all equally. So I just wanted to say that.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Go ahead, you have three minutes to address the council.
Stephen Whitmer, fifty-six hundred Block of Eastview Drive, Osceola, Indiana. Thank you, President Root, council members, for allowing me to address you tonight. I wanted to speak about the increased spending that's coming down the pike with regard to, I believe, Senate Bill Four from the state. I am an American citizen, I'm a Hoosier, and a citizen of St. Joe County. I am mandated by the government, federally, state, and local, to pay taxes. I am not a taxpayer. To increase spending to the level that Mr. Holcomb wants to spend, and then it looks like the state government wants to spend on healthcare, I think is ridiculous. Additionally, I'm appalled that the Department of Health here in St. Joe County was providing increased salaries without the county council involvement. I believe this healthcare, our Department of Health in the county is, has been out of control. You know, they mandated us to wear masks. All these masks they mandated don't filter out airborne one to one-half micron size particulate. It may snag a few, but it's ineffective. My background is an industrial millwright and electrician. One of my jobs was to make sure that hydraulics were very clean, so that all the valving and controls would function properly. If we applied the same type of masking as we do the masking that we were supposed to wear, and compared that filtration to hydraulic systems in aircraft, we'd have planes falling out of the sky everywhere. We would have to wear a, what you've seen in virology labs, they wear either a full containment suit, or a double-element mask that filters down to a low-micron level, one to one-and-a-half low-micron level. One last comment, equality is not equity. Equity is a Marxist terminology, and it does not belong in our vocabulary.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak? Seeing no one else in the room, is there anyone online who wishes to speak? Going once, going twice. That concludes our privilege of the floor, then. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
The whole council seconded that one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned.